Gonna come to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of the U.S., the Zia symbol. Or representative among the United.
Good, I remember the first three words. Approve agenda, motion, our motion to approve agenda.
Commissioner Chairman, I'll, I do have a couple amendments, I would like to strike number five. There was an issue, I forgot to update it on the agenda, so the date is correct, incorrect on the minute, minute meetings. Also, I'd like to change number twenty-two from resolution twenty-two-five to zero four-three to twenty-two-five zero four-zero. But Daniel, can I have your approval on that? To amend the agenda as far as the changing the resolution number?
Yes, absolutely, the, so the resolution number is not the substance of what was put on the agenda to give notice to the public, so the, so changing the number is no big deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir. Move to approve the agenda with change striking number five and amending the number on twenty, line item twenty-two, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Truhiel?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, recognize visitors. On screen, we got Daniel Ivy Soto, Jeff Gilmer, Justin Menhart, and Audrey Armijo.
Tim Martinez, IT.
Tom V Hill, Emergency Management.
Leslie Thompson for Indigene Care.
Gordon Regina Slate, B Hill Maldonado Detention Center.
Ray Edith Truhiel, Chief Deputy Clerk.
David Stanbaum, Vermejo Park Ranch.
Leroy Sandoval, Finance Director.
Jonathan Arthur, Arthur Roloff.
Roger Smith, Colfax Gazette.
Thank you for coming today, line item seven, public comments. Seeing none, we'll move forward, line item eight. Discussion, Arthur Roloff update. Mr. Arthur. Please turn the mic on, the little button on the front. No.
Notice.
There you are, sir, thank you.
I guess just an overall update of what has been going on the last year since I've taken over on the contract. I have been, the bad, I guess, I've been slow on getting the dumpsters painted and everything else, but I have been getting them fixed. Mostly as soon as I get the calls within about a week. I messed up once here, actually, there went to exchange them today up in the Moreno Valley, there were some that the bear locks had been broke off throughout the winter. And the bears showed up a little earlier than I had expected, but they are getting replaced today. I would like to say I have not missed a route. The only times that I did not show up on the day that I was scheduled to show up was due to blizzards and bad weather throughout the winter, but we hit it the next day. During July of last year, obviously a huge learning experience. But we were a little rough during the Fourth of July weekend. Not being able to get us, there was just more trash than what we had dumpsters for. And I don't know how to prepare for that, I mean, we could set out a hundred of them and but then they're not needed for the rest of the year. I'm going to, this year, I'm going to change that up a little bit and hit them a little more often right at that time, you know, say go the day before and then have a truck there the day after to hit the worst spots like Black Lake, some of the other areas around there, I've got them kind of listed out. So I'm gonna try to attempt to cure it that way, hitting them before and right after, to try to help with that situation. Other than that, I mean, I don't, my biggest downfall is I haven't got them painted, I ran out of time last year and there were a lot more junk ones than I had expected. There were some rough ones, a lot of them. But other than that, I mean, we've had our trucks, we've been able to keep them going, never miss a route, everything else, and I just, you know, if you guys had any questions or concerns, be happy to answer them, but that was really all I really had on the situation, so.
Oh man. I just want to thank you, I, I understand it does take time and you've been doing an excellent job, I do see how even though you haven't painted all of them, which is fine, you know what I mean, you, you still have a new one with maybe an older one. And it's, it's working out really good, and I haven't had any trash complaints as far as that goes, so I I really appreciate it, and that's the best thing about government and how government should exist is when they, when they're invisible, right? So it's, they're, they're quiet, and so it, it works out good, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, what I've seen has been great, I think it's a lot cleaner, a lot better job. I have never, in what, this be eighteen years, seen the roll-off serviced like they are now. You guys really roll them things, and I hadn't had any complaints, of course, this will be my first Fourth of July on commission. But also know what happens Fourth of July, and it is insane. Driving around the county, there's, where the roll-offs and some of the dumpsters were in the past that were always piled with trash, haven't been. So kudos and thank you for a good job, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'm gonna work on the Fourth of July a little harder this year, try to figure that out a little better. Last year, we added a bunch of dumpsters and roll-offs in different places, the covered ones. And it filled everything up, I mean, everything, I I don't even understand, I don't know where it all comes from, but anyway. I just want to let you guys know about that and just kind of update where we're standing, so if you have any questions or any problems, call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Line item nine, discussion action, approve expenditures, any comments?
I don't have any.
Motion to approve, some of, second, roll call.
Chairman Truhiel?
Yes.
Commissioner Truhiel, Chairman Tatum.
Yes.
Discussion action, approve expenditures per cent to resolution number twenty-two-two-fourty-nine. Discussion?
None.
I have none, motion to approve.
Some of.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Truhiel?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Line item eleven, discussion action, financial report.
All right, I'll take it from there, good morning commissioners, I'm gonna share my screen, I just sent a request to share my screen. So I have up our, our status reports showing our, our status on all of our ongoing projects. Starting with the audits, we are slightly behind schedule on providing audit PVCs, I, I hope during the next commission meeting to be able to tell you that we've submitted all of those to, to the auditor, that's our, really our primary focus here in the next coming two weeks. On budget, we did make really significant progress, especially on the FY twenty-six budget, we got projections built out and sent them to the department heads. We held a workshop last Monday. Where we were on site, we got just direct verbal feedback from all the department heads on their particular department budgets. And had some discussions on that and provided some training to them. On grant reports, we did obtain access to the Delphi system for the FAA grants. Yesterday, I held some training with the finance director on, on how to get all that submitted, so that should, that's in progress right now. Those should be submitted in the next few days for reimbursement. There are still just a couple of grants that need to be reconciled, especially for the road department, I, I received some information from that last Monday from, from the road department head. For DFA reporting, that's pretty much caught up at this point, the March thirty-first reporting is due at the end of the month, so I hope to get that submitted by the thirtieth on, on, before its due date. There are no miscellaneous items that I'm tracking. As far as upcoming work is concerned, on the FY twenty-six budget, we do still need to hold a meeting with the, the, all the fire department, the volunteer fire departments, and that is being scheduled currently. After that, we'll have to hold hearing for public input at some point in the near future, and after we have the interim budgets developed, we'll project out estimated cash balances. So I have to take all the recommendations from the department heads and really compile all the information and see where things are, are landed. We'll also need kind of additional information on payroll, there have been several requests for payroll increases, and we'll have to see kind of the position, the financial position of the county, once we get all the operating expenditures input. And we'll make a recommendation at that point.
And Justin, can I suggest something, once you get the operating part in? Hold that off to the side, that's something that I'd like to see outside of any kind of salary adjustments now, just to see how we are.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, the next couple items, I refer to the audits, I'm currently preparing all the outstanding audit requests. ARPA reporting is, is due at the end of the month, we did finally obtain access, administrative access to be able to submit that reporting, so I expect that to be on track. Budget, I'll talk more about budget here in a second, there is some, some cleanup that needs to be done on the FY twenty-five budget as we're kind of approaching the end of the fiscal year. And just kind of looking at the, all the milestones here, most are on track outside of the audit submission, milestone four. Budget is, we're just a little bit behind, but I think we're gonna be on track here soon. And the upcoming milestones, I expect to be on target. That's all I have for financial report, I'll, I'll stand for questions at this time.
Justin, I had a question, the, on the audit side of things, the I know we had to report for our general obligation bond, is your reporting, is that for the prior year or is it for for fiscal year twenty-five that we're behind on?
So what do you, what do you mean when you say general obligation bond reporting?
We have to do our S and P rating. But is that a, is that what you're talking about, the reporting, is that twenty-four or twenty-five fiscal year?
Yeah, they want your most recent audited financial statements as part of continuing disclosures on the bonds, so that would have been FY twenty-four is the, the one currently behind.
Okay, and that's what we're just waiting on right now?
That's what we're working on now.
Okay, okay, thank you. If you need anything, let me know.
Okay, I have no questions, you answered them as you went. Line item twelve, discussion action, budget report.
I am sharing my screen now, I have the, the total by department and fund, which I sent to you guys yesterday, so you should have a copy of, of this version of the report. We're currently about eighty percent of the way through the year, so looking at column I right here, we expect these numbers to be higher than twenty percent, meaning there's more than twenty percent budget remaining. And as I, I scanned through this earlier, I didn't see any items of concern as we look at the general fund. These are fully expended for senior citizens contracts, county insurance, that's to be expected. Corrections is on target. The county road department is on target, and all the fire funds have plenty of remaining budget. There is some cleanup that still needs to be done on their recruitment funds, I need to get with payroll and have the labor distributions turned off the recruitment funds and go back to the general fund because they're continuing to accrue, causing some negative budget balances in these funds, so I'll work on cleaning those up. And there are no other items of concern as we kind of get down into the, the grant funds and debt service funds at the bottom here.
So Justin, just to, on the, on the law enforcement protection funds. Basically, what's happening is, is payroll is continuing to allocate their salary to that grant, but the grant is completed, right? Okay.
Yeah, so we just need to journal entry those, back to the general fund essentially, get the, we need to get it to stop because we had already done a journal entry and I, I thought the labor distributions had been turned off, I was incorrect on that.
Okay. And sometimes they hire like specific people for specific grants to cover a particular position. But it sounds like maybe it's not, the grants are not completely covering those positions.
Right.
Okay.
There's more, more salary than the grant can cover, which is a good thing because you're maxing out all of your, your grant funding.
Good thing for, for maxing out grants, but not a good thing for the general fund. But yeah, no, it's, it's, there's gonna be some differences, I'm sure. That we can journal entry.
And, and I, I'll segue that into, into the other thing I wanted to talk about, you know, as I said, we're eighty percent of the way through the year. As I look at the line item level information, there are certain payroll costs, payroll line items that are starting to become over expended. We need to take a step back and, and take a look at those and see why they went over and probably project them out, and we'll have some additional budget adjustment requests during hopefully next commission meeting to fix some of those.
I'm sure, maybe you can speak to a couple of the positions.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions on what you guys are talking about. If everything has been submitted to the LGBMS and all those numbers are correct, we still need to send in our quarterly reports so that they will reimburse us that money.
That can be done now, they've lifted their restrictions on, on the reimbursement requests to, or us catching up that quarter of the reporting.
Okay, well, this is the first I heard of that, so we'll get that done. On the law enforcement retention grant, which is the first one, it's the oldest of the grants, we hired multiple deputies under that. And as that fund draws down, we move those positions which were approved into the general fund over into the general portion. And then we just keep doing the payroll until eventually we zero that out on the first one. On the second grant, that is for Ms. Strom and Deputy Holland, those are the only two that can be paid out of that grant, and that's, I think that was a big one, we had to send back a substantial size check last year because we couldn't spend it all.
Is that lining up with what you're seeing in the in triotic, Justin, like he's talking about the original grant and then the second grant?
Yeah, there's, they're split into individual funds.
And are you seeing the two being charged to the second grant? Okay.
I'll stand for any questions on, on budget.
I had a Go ahead. Have repulsed for the salaries out of the, the for solid waste and also lodgers tax for those two positions?
Can you repeat your question?
Did repool from the solid waste fund and the lodgers tax fund to cover those half salaries paid out of the county manager's office?
I'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, thank you. If you need more clarification, if that was unclear, just let me know and be happy to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to get with you after.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good, I don't have any questions. Discussion grant report.
So I don't have any additional updates on grants to provide other than the, the reporting updates. Commissioner Truhiel, I'll defer to you on, on any additional grant updates you wish to provide.
Sure, currently, I'm still waiting on the Village of Angel Far for an MOU on the marketing grant for the AXX. I have a meeting with him on Wednesday and we'll follow up with that. The Tiger Nine Grant, I seen some emails go back and forth and what we're gonna be doing with that funding is getting a three-month CD, just to hold it separate from any other funds since it still is, is federal, and hopefully by that time, the three months, everything will be closed out within the Tiger Grant, and those funds can be transferred back into the general fund once everything is closed out. In, in addition, I submitted a response to FRA as far as our single audit goes, they came back with some more more, not necessarily questions, they just, they're waiting on the county to wrap up its, was it supplemental financial guidebook and a few other things, so I'll be working on that and hopefully try to get it in the next meeting or two on the agenda. Once we get that done, I think we should, they'll close out that single audit. And we'll be good to go, the baby boxes, spoke with the city of Raton, they're, they're working on, they have yet to take it to their commission, I'm hoping by next commission it will go on there, they were looking at building locations, et cetera. And that is part of that, goes in that contract, but there's historical buildings, et cetera, and they need to see where they could put that baby box or the infant surrender box. Let's see here, we submitted reimbursement for the apron. For what? Okay, so yeah, we, we submitted for the apron there, we're still submitting for the commercial airline grant, which is the Rise grant, so we're getting reimbursements, that's working good. Leroy, like Justin said, is gonna be submitting a reimbursement for roughly two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to FAA for the apron, we're moving forward with a lot of that stuff, we also went ahead and trying to reimburse quarterly, so stuff's not staying out there, we went ahead and build out Moles and Corbins, some of their engineering projects with the event center, we'll close out one grant for the event center, use the remaining of those funds and draw down on the other this way, so pretty much engineering is gonna be completely covered and paid for with this, and then the only thing that we will have to expend is the, our drawdown on the grant, it's gonna be the construction, so, but we're gonna try to our goal is to always do at least a drawdown a quarter on, on these grants, whatever we have available to show that it's active too on, on the grant, grantors website. I think that's kind of, kind of it, so any other questions on any grants that pop, oh, broadband, the Cessers moving forward with moving her GIS system online. I met with JP, JPL, I believe on the engineering side of things. I have a meeting with the state broadband office, I'm waiting, waiting on some dates from them. They extended the grant for one year, so we're, we're good there, however, the JPL on the engineering side was to do the east side of Raton out to Allen's Alley. And then from French Track to the Village of Maxwell and then the UU Bar to Miami. I'm gonna see if we can still do the engineering for UU Bar to Miami and the Maat French Track and Maxwell area, however, it's probably not beneficial to use that money now to do the engineering on the east side of Raton out to Allen's Alley. The reason is the, the take rate on who will actually sign up, or if we were to get another provider in there, they'd have to compete with two other current providers, and that take rate's just not gonna be enough for any kind of investment into that area where Resound is now coming in, putting fibers to all homes by end of twenty-twenty-six. Through the whole east side of Raton, the north side and out to Allen's Alley. So that's, that's coming along. So I'm gonna have a discussion with, with the state broadband office to get their suggestions on that, that's just kind of my thinking behind it, and if they're in the same, same thought process, I'm gonna ask them, where can we redistribute these funds to? As far as the broadband equity and inclusion goes, so. So. That's that's all for now.
Sounds good. We have lots there is that can still use broadband. Anything from Justin, Audrey?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um Commissioner, I just wanted to add that. I did start taking a look at um. Example language that we can use for the FRA request and so. I have some of that pulled together, but I wasn't finding exactly what I wanted, so I think it might be a hybrid of, you know. Us taking a look at what works for the county and some examples and um writing up something that can come to the commission, so.
Perfect, thank you so much, Audrey, I appreciate that. Uh Commissioner, I just also uh mentioned. Part of the bars that we're gonna be doing is the senior centers uh where the county received a grant. To purchase three new vehicles for the senior centers, uh that's in the process already. Uh gone to purchasing, I believe, so we get the notice of obligation. So we're we're working on that, the transfer today is just to transfer money into that fund to. Uh get it going. That's all.
Any further? Seeing none, we will move on, discussion, action, resolution, twenty twenty five dash oh four one, budget adjustment. Various funds.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um the first one of the bars is Filmott Fund two oh nine zero four zero nine has sufficient funds. Whereas an increase in expenditures. Under such under such circumstances is necessary and lawful to account for John Hyatt travel reimbursement. And additional firefighters planning on attending training through the end of fiscal year twenty five. So we're gonna increase per diem expense by three thousand. The next one is whereas law enforcement protection, law enforcement protection fund two eleven. Zero four one four has sufficient funds. And it's an increase in expenditures to budget and increase in expenditures of five thousand. So that the revised alley PF grant budgeted award amount is a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred. Um under such under such circumstances is necessary and lawful to account for personal vehicle. Or for inventory, the following changes should be made, an increase in expense of inventory for five thousand. Um the next one is for indigent care grocery receipts. Two twenty zero five five zero has sufficient funds. And it's an increase in expenditures to pay for an emergency flight for life of a day. The tape under such circumstances is necessary and lawful. Um and it's an increase in expense in indigent claims for BMDC of seventy thousand. The next one is special other grant, MCMC Hospital Fund two nine nine zero eight zero two. It has sufficient funds and it's an increase in expenditures under such such circumstances is necessary and lawful. To account for the purchase of a striker Lucas CPR compression device for the city of Ratone's newest um ambulance. And it's an increased expense in countrywide medical program of three thousand. The next one is intergovernmental grants, the yes program two one eight zero four one two. It's an increase in expenditures under such such circumstances is necessary and lawful. To account for the semi annual rental fees and reoccurring telephone bill for the rest of fiscal year twenty five. Such changes should be made, an increase in expense to rent of land and building of two hundred and thirty five dollars. And an increase in telephone line item of six hundred. The next one is the general fund has sufficient funds. An increase in expenditures under such circumstances is necessary and lawful to account for election zoning permit, storage costs. An increase in two dollar an hour pay for a registered nurse at Bee Hill Maldonado Detention Center. Pay membership dues not paid since December twentieth, twenty twenty three to Ports to Flames Alliance. And to pay February, April and May food costs for the senior center. And to provide funds for the senior center to pu- purchase three vehicles for a hundred and thou- a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that's for waiting for repayment of grant A twenty three H two zero one three. The following changes should be made, an increase in supplies for um the clerk's office of thirty five dollars. Full time positions at Bee Hill Maldonado of nine hundred and sixty, FICA regular at BMDC of sixty seven. FICA Medicare at BMDC of sixteen, Para of two twenty at BMDC. Group health insurance at BMDC of two seventy nine, retiree healthcare of twenty two dollars. Workman's comp of five dollars, subscription and dues of. One thousand two hundred and thirty eight and the senior citizens program of a hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred. The next one is general county insurance, Gatsby one oh one zero one one four. Has sufficient funds and it's a reclassification expenditures um. For multi line insurance policies, we're gonna increase that expense thirty thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars and seventy eight cents. And decrease multi line pool law enforcement by the same amount. The next one's general fund, emergency management, one oh one zero one one eight. Where they have sufficient funds and it's a reclassification and expenditures under such circumst- to the necessary and lawful. The following changes should be made as followed, increase in ex- inventory and a decrease expense in professional services. The next one is for the law enforcement protection, law enforcement protection fund two eleven zero four one four. A reclassification expenditures under such such circumstances is necessary and lawful for following changes to be made. An increase in expense to inventory of one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and sixty nine cents. And a decrease in supplies for the same amount. And the final one is enterprise airport, Colfax County Airport Operations five oh two zero six zero five. It has sufficient funds and a reclassification expenditures under such circumstances is necessary and lawful. The following changes should be made, an increase in expense to maintenance and equipment of four thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents. And a decrease in the following three line items, professional services, two thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars and fourteen cents. Inventory nine hundred and sixty eight dollars and eighteen cents and diesel fuel seven twenty eighty four seven.
And the maintenance and equipment that's gonna go away, correct? On the airport.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's all I had.
I had a had some questions.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm curious, why'd you know that the the. Clerk requested money from general fund on the thirty five dollars. I feel like that would be something that they would have something within another line item.
Um that was with.
What's that?
I don't know why it would requesting from the general fund, I don't think I did that.
Um that was yesterday with accounts payable. When they did the pay run, it was. I'm over expanding the line item, so to get it on today's budget, we moved it from the general fund. Per mine and your conversation with me, you and accounts payable.
Yeah, so this was just to get those bills paid, that the line item is over on the clerk's side?
Yes, sir, it was over thirty four dollars and ninety something cents and because. There's three weeks between our next commission meeting when we were gonna incur a late charge. So we just try to put it on here, that way we can get it on the next pay run to get paid, so we don't incur the late fee cost.
Okay. And then the other. Question.
I guess I'm just not understanding, I'm gonna have to check my stuff also because I didn't think. We were over expanding anything, so.
Um. I do wanna change the wording on that first page or under the whereas, so where it says LE PF funding. Just to strike to account for general personal vehicle use benefit and roadways for fiscal year twenty five, so we'll just strike that. And then on the next line where where it goes down, not the next one, but the one after that. Right towards the bottom of the page where it says whereas to, where we'd strike the same wording. Cause it says emergency flight for life of a day teeny under such circumstances necessary to lawful. To account for personal vehicle usage, use benefit of roadways, so this is. That was a mistake I didn't I didn't catch prior. So I'd like to strike or amend. The document, I'm fine with the the clerks there. It's just a question.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll make I'll make the motion to uh approve as amended.
Second. Roll call.
Thank you, Leroy.
Uh Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Yes. Line item fifteen, discussion, action, indigent care claims.
It is now, yep.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board, I only have a couple to go over with you. Um on the first one, it's two sixty nine. Part of that was actually approved last month, I had it down for one sixty nine and. Even though I triple checked, I still missed it and it was actually two sixty nine, so we pulled it and we brought it to this month. Um the only new one I have is the one for six thousand seven hundred and two, so that's a total of sixty nine, seventy one, ninety five that I need. Approved for this month.
Questions?
Do you not have any?
Okay, and then I just wanted to let the board know that we did have an unclaimed person. Um due to. They the time of changing personnel over, um OMI had not been able to reach anybody and. After thirty days, they can start charging sixty nine dollars a day, so I went with Commissioner Si. Um acting county manager and spoke with him to hurry up and push that one through so that we did not get charged and they were. Okay with it, you know, that we went quickly to try and get that taken care of. So that was a thousand dollars for that now. Okay?
Further?
No, that's all I have. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion to approve indigent care claims.
Uh some of it. What's her? Did you make the motion?
Sure, motion to.
I'll second that.
Call.
Commissioner here.
Yes.
Yes. Line item sixteen, discussion, action. Protecting tax exempt municipal bonds letters to US House Committee. On ways and means.
Uh Commissioner, this was brought to us by New Mexico County's request and that we support this initiative, um. It's just more so just a letter of s- uh support, uh be more than happy to answer any further questions.
I have none.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Line item seventeen, discussion, action, proclamation, National Mental Health Awareness Month, twenty twenty five. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Seeing none, motion to approve.
Still moved.
Roll call. Oh, is that again, roll call, sorry.
Um Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Yes. Line item eighteen, discussion, action, Colfax County Fire Excise Tax Budget Proposal, Mr. V Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission, uh Tom B Hill, uh. Chief Miami Fire and also Secretary of the Fire Excise Tax Advisory Board. Uh so we did meet a few weeks ago, the formulated budget we're uh. Estimating for this year is four hundred thousand dollars, we've gone um. Rather conservative the last two years, mostly due to lack of information for ver- variety reasons, no need to get into. But um as a result, the excise tax budget cash balance is out. Um and basic math right now, I think we're sitting at about seven hundred thousand. Uh with our continued obligations through this budget year, probably another hundred thousand, which leaves us. Roughly five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand remaining in the balance without even including what's going to come in in the next couple of months. Which uh April, May and June tend to be the highest um. Total months for excise tax coming back into the county, so um we felt like four hundred thousand was a very good number to go with. Um leaving us plenty of cash available balance as well on the fund. So um with that, honestly, it's it's fairly straightforward, all all the uh. Recommendations are there and I'll just stand for any questions.
I have none other than did they ever get the five hundred thousand corrected for. Communications that we supposedly were getting.
Um.
From the governor.
I'm not aware of what fund that is coming into, whether it's going to the fire marshal, I don't believe they can actually put it in the excise budget.
Okay.
Uh I think it would need to come to the fire marshal's office and so then we'll have to talk about.
I didn't thought you might know, since you're here. Anyway, I have no further.
Uh Commissioner. I don't have any either.
Okay, motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Line item nineteen, discussion, action memorandum of agreement between Colfax County. And Taft County Emergency Services and Management Mutual Aid.
So yes, again, uh switch hats, Tom V Hill, Emergency Management this time. Um talking with my friends over in Taft County, we realized while we had a um a standing mutual. Mutual aid agreement between the two counties, we thought it would be a good idea to just go ahead and refresh it. Um it's kind of boilerplate language, nothing really outstanding in there, but it's just an agreement to provide emergency support services uh across county lines.
Questions? No, only only requests is uh if it's passed, once they sign, if we could get a executed copy.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Tell him, he done.
Yes. Line item twenty, discussion, action, resolution. Twenty twenty five dash zero four two. Adoption of the Colfax County, New Mexico Multi Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Again, yeah, I think that's a mouthful, um if you've seen the plan, it's over five hundred pages.
Yes.
So um culmination of two years of work, uh we actually approached the. Revamping of our emergency uh hazard mitigation plan um following the Cook's Peak Fire, um. Ours was already overdue for rewriting, it was just it was time to get it done, um past time to get it done. The way we approached this one, however, um we didn't make it multi jurisdictional, allowing each of the municipalities within Colfax County to participate. Um that essentially allows them to call this their own plan. Instead of previously, we had a Colfax County plan and so the Village of Maxwell could be covered under the Colfax County plan. You know, through tertiary type agreements, this is now the Village of Maxwell's plan, this can be Bill Jacimron's plan as well as Colfax County plan. Um the reasons for doing it that way um is streamlines. Any sort of grant um for mitigation or even post disaster recovery efforts, which means those villages don't have to go through us. They can go individually through FEMA to receive that and of course that takes some burden off of us, we can still help and support the municipalities if they want. But again, it allows them the option to go individually, but uh the basics of the hazard mitigation plan. Is one identification of potential hazards facing the community and then proposal of mitigation efforts in order um. To try and make something better, uh the one thing that we really highlighted on the county side was roads and bridges. Um that's a major concern for us. And um under without a hazard mitigation plan, under a disaster, you're qualified under the category A and B funds for recovery. Uh those typically allow you to replace a destroyed structure with something of similar type. The problem being if we go to the bridge example, if you destroy an old. World War Two tank bridge, it's been decked over for seventy years. And it gets washed away, you can't replace that with the same because that's not approved current bridge engineering standard. So when that bridge gets washed away and thrown down the Canadian River and you approach FEMA, they say, no, we can't replace that, you can't get any funding to do anything. Uh I use that example because that exact thing happened to us about twelve years ago. Uh, I use that example because that exact thing happened to us about twelve years ago, which we lost some of those old World War Two bridges on the Canadian. And we converted those slow water crossings. So under a, um, an approved hazard mitigation plan, especially if we've already highlighted that our bridges are a problem, we can first apply for mitigation funding to improve those bridges now before they get destroyed. But also, if those bridges do get destroyed, then now we can approach FEMA and say, we would like to replace this bridge with a modern, new, fancy, all the engineering in place, current bridge standard, and then we can qualify it under the hazard mitigation plan for this. And uh, so far, uh, Village of Eagleness passed this, adopting it as their own plan. It'll be up before City of Rattone tonight. I believe Springer and Simron have it scheduled for the next week or two. And I think two weeks for Angel Fire. The only municipality I haven't heard that have it scheduled is, uh, the Village of Maxwell. I just haven't heard back from them yet, but I'm sure they're probably approaching it at some point.
Great.
Sounds great. Thank you for all your work and effort. I have no questions.
I have a few. Uh, just, I, I was looking through the, the recommendations and everything too. I guess, can you, will you help the, the county manager, myself and the, the new one, whoever that may be, to help start implementing some of these plans? One of the ones that I saw that, that I, I wanted to get done prior was the wildfire protection plan. So I know you make, uh, North Central's working on some stuff like that, like I know they, they did with this. Um, I have a meeting on Thursday with North Central, just a regular board meeting. And uh, I'll ask that question again and kind of where they stand on that. There's a lot of big dollar amounts in that, that hazard mitigation recommendations, uh. Yeah, I, I do have to share one little thing though. Uh, I was gonna say for Roger, be careful over there, Simron. I was looking at the, the lightning strikes for people. So it was Simron was the, the one place that. That's a, a fear. I don't like lightning. Another, another question I had was with the dams. Those are, those are a major concern. I know the county does not own any of those dams. But I worry about the, the financial cost to those organizations to get those up and going. And some of them are on private land, like the, like the one on the TO, added as a poor rating. And I don't know how, how to work with them to help them improve that because even if that dam were to fail, sure, but majority of it's on their land, but.
So the dams is actually an interesting one. Um, our original submittal included a more robust, um, high-hazard dam risk profile. We actually had to withdraw that out. Um, so within the last two years, essentially, um, there's some new money available on the federal side through Bureau of Reclamation, working with FEMA for, um, looking at older engineered dams and what are called critical dams, which have engineering issues, water infiltration problem, all the other lists of things. Um, so this chunk of money is so new, no one really even understood the full process because typical of federal government, they just make something and make up the rules as they go. Um, as we, I included, uh, dams in our hazard mitigation plan, even though they are commonly included because one, I wanted to, um, make use of this funding. But also, I, I know it's an issue for us of the, you know, thirty-three regulated dams in Colfax County, twenty-seven of them are listed in critical condition. So that, that's a problem to me. And I do work with the, our existing ownership in order to work on their emergency action plans. Miami actually just got theirs approved, um, proud to say. When we submitted this to the feds, of course, they liked seeing the dam portion. When it went back to the state for review, the state rejected it because the current state language doesn't account for dams within hazard mitigation plans. That's how new this federal program is. And so they did introduce legislation this last session to address that on the state of New Mexico side. However, I didn't want to wait for the legislation section to end and us to go through the rest of the fiscal year for New Mexico to fully implement this. It would kick back our plan another couple of months. So I withdrew the dam section from our hazard mitigation plan, resubmitted it to the feds and the state. It's gotten approval coming back to us. And now, once the legislation is fully enabled on the state of New Mexico, we'll submit a revision to this process in the next couple of months. Probably submit it by early fall and then get that approved back as a revision addendum to this plan. And what that does is it opens up this new chunk of money, which the interesting part about it is it really focuses on upgrading and making old, um, dams that may be grandfathered, may not be grandfathered under, under engineering standards, bringing them up to modern engineering technology. And the way they organize this, it could potentially allow for private entities to apply for this money. And especially if it's covered under hazard mitigation plan, potentially coming through the county, the county acting as physical agent has passed through of these funds. But maybe not putting the county on the hook for the money. Instead, it just flows through our channels and gets paid out the way we've done some of our other, you know, hundred percent non-match grants. Um, so it's, it's a really interesting program. It's just, we had to go through kind of a circuitous route to get there. But uh, working with the dam owners, um, in fact, uh, the number of the critical ones, uh, will be talking with the owners in the next couple of months. And uh, as we create the revision to this plan, they'll be included in. That's part of the, the planning process.
Great. Well, thank you and thank you for taking that extra on the dam side. I appreciate it.
I've read your five hundred pages. If you amend it, please just send the amendment.
Will do.
Thank you, sir. No further.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Line item twenty-one, discussion action, approval of the CCSO and Vermejo Park Ranch LLC. For Green Mountain.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good morning, Chairman Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, so what you have before you today is a memorandum of understanding between Vermejo Park Ranch and, uh, Colfax County Sheriff's Office. When we installed the new generator up there at Green Mountain, we've been working on that, that site for several years already. Uh, the generator was the, the final touch. Um, the remote monitoring will be done within the next couple of months with your approval on that, uh, to keep an eye on that generator. Uh, we've been working with Vermejo Park, this gen- uh, this MOU, uh, basically allows them to house their equipment in our building in exchange for plugging into our generator. Uh, when we lose power in that area, uh, they have offered, uh, to provide IT services when our IT is unavailable to make it there. If we have a repeater go down, um, they assisted us in putting live cameras up there and, uh, they set all that up for us. Uh, and really that's what it is, i- in a nutshell, is, is they're helping us and we're helping them. I did bring, uh, Mr. Stanball here for any questions, if you have anything for Vermejo Park.
I see, man. Not having questions.
And this boy is also reviewed by the attorney.
Yep.
I have motion to approve.
Still moved?
Roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Uh, amended line item, discussion action twenty-two, uh, two zero two-five dash oh four oh, accepting amendment number one to state aviation grant, AXX, that's two-five dash oh-one. Raise Grant Increase in Funding. Discussion?
Uh, Mission, this was a little extra money that was left over in the pot for the RISE grant. Uh, and so we are being awarded an extra forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, taking our total grant amount to one million four hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. This does require a local ten percent match. However, the Village of Angel Fire has, uh, graciously confirmed that they would be willing to accept this, uh, ten percent match, which would be roughly five thousand dollars. We also have Jeff Gilmer on the line with the Village of Angel Fire, if he wanted to, to speak to any of this as well. And uh, that's all I have on that. And this is the RISE grant, the commercial air flights into Angel Fire.
Mr. Gilmer, any comment?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, uh, Commissioners and, uh, Manager Trujillo. Yeah, this grant money, uh, will extend the season out, uh, this summer for, uh, flight operations, uh, with advanced air. So we appreciate you all, uh, considering this and we look forward to hopefully picking this up and continue this, this next winter and, and next year. It's been a, it's been a good event. I think overall, uh, March numbers dropped, uh, for the filling of the aircraft. Uh, but overall, we had about a sixty percent plus occupancy on the, on the airplane. So if we can extend it out, you know, another few weeks or a month with this money, uh, that's just nothing but positive for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, the, the village has no problem taking over this match?
Affirmative. Yeah, they, they, the village manager affirmed this a couple of months ago when we heard this money was going to become available, so. Yes, sir. And we can, we can, uh, maybe affirm that, uh, this meeting tomorrow and have some more discussion and get that down on paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
Nothing further.
Motion to approve.
Still moved?
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Yes. Line item twenty-three, discussion action, appointment of Shelley O'Neil to the Colfax County At-Large Board Position for the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District.
Uh, Commissioners, the North Central had our at-large district, uh, seat come open, Landon Newton had, had resigned his position there. Um, Reeve, the, I guess coalition from Colfax County, which includes Lori Chadley, Randy Deets is the Economic Development, Lori Chadley is with the City of Rattone, myself, uh, all kind of met, we requested uh, letters of interest. Uh, Shelley put forth her name, uh, Ree- Ree met with Shelley. And, um, Ree would recommend, uh, her appointment to the board as the at-large individual. And, uh, she's, she's excited and, and willing to move forward with this. She does reside within the Philmont Scout Ranch, uh, out there, works out there. And that's an integral part of Colfax County and its economic. Um, so Ree believe that she'd make a, a valid member.
I have no problem with it. Motion to approve.
Still moved?
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Yes. Line item twenty-four, discussion action, Rogers Tax Funding Request, Chase Ranch Foundation Application. The total amount was three thousand nine hundred and forty-two-four to be funded. And it's a learning lesson for me as well as the Chase Foundation, I believe. But, um, everything met qualifications. Any questions, sir?
No, sir. I have none.
Motion to approve.
Still moved?
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Yes. Line item twenty-five, discussion action update on YES Program and request to go out for direct position.
Uh, Commissioners, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the YES Program. Um, as Acting County Manager, I decided to move, uh, on from the current Director Deb Ortiz uh, and give her notice for her contract. I would like to go out for a new director. Uh, currently in the last, the, the state has gone in and, and produced some audits and everything else. And that was within the packet. However, uh, due to those findings of those audits, et cetera, the program has now been placed on a, uh, what is it, uh, proactive correction plan. Um, this is going to be the second time within the last three to four years that we've been put on this plan. Um, Kristen Ortiz has now stepped into this position, uh, for the time being. She, so she's Acting Director. And, um, she's, I've been working with her and been working with the state as well to get the, the plans, uh, staffing reports, et cetera, caseload reports, uh, submitted to the state. The one thing I would also request from the Commission, um, and it would probably be in my motion and I'll have Daniel, uh, correct me if I'm incorrect at all. The, the difference in pay, Kristen's taking on this extra, extra time and reporting all her duties and everything to the state. Uh, would like to pay her the difference of what her current contract is to Mrs. Ortiz's prior contract, and that's four hundred dollars. So I don't, uh, still in the discussion part, if you had any questions or, or comments on any of that?
No, sir. I have read it all. Unless the attorney has anything to say. Daniel?
Mr. Sutis?
Yeah, so this, it like is, as the, as the, uh, uh, as, as Commissioner Trujillo indicated, uh, this, this merely, uh, grants her the delta. We're still saving the equivalent of her salary. Uh, her compensation during this time while we're looking for, for a, uh, someone to take over that position. But it recognizes the additional duties that she's doing during the interim.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll, uh, if you're okay and Daniel, correct me if I'm, I'm incorrect. What I'll do is I'll make a motion to approve the request to go out for a new director position. Well, in the interim, uh, till the new position is filled, increasing the monthly pay for Kristen Trujillo to the four hundred dollars.
By four hundred dollars, not two four hundred, by four hundred.
By four hundred.
By four hundred, yes. Thank you.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Line item twenty-six, discussion action, AXX Hangar Design and Placement. Mr. Provi.
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Trujillo, uh, and I believe Jeff Gilmer from the village is online also. This is regarding the, uh, hangar up at the Angel Fire Airport that's under design that, uh, the county received a, uh, grant from the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division for. Uh, the request has been made and, and we've looked at it and, uh, the request has been made by the village to, uh, rotate the hangars so the doors face east in front, uh, tax, the taxiway that's out there now. But also to move the hangars down to the south end of that existing taxiway. We've done a preliminary on that and there will be some, uh, to maintain, uh, uh, recommended slopes from the taxiway up to the hangar finished floor so, uh, pilots can get their aircraft in and out with ease. Uh, we'll need to, uh, change some of the grading on that taxiway. So that, that involves some pavement work. But we could set that, that hangar there on that south end. Also would be required is to extend the electrical uh, from where we were going to extend it on the previous location at the north end of the taxiway down to the south end. I'm not sure, uh, impact of that, that's more of a, uh, kit Carson. Uh, they'll have to do that extension and then the, the service drop would be the, basically the same, um, same work. Um, we, engineering wise, uh, no problem with, uh, doing this work. We just, uh, talking to, uh, Mr. Trujillo. Uh, thought it best to come to the Commission, uh, just to make sure everybody's in line with this, uh, rotation and relocation of the hangar to the south. Uh, it preserves the rest of that hangar area to the north for future development, other individual hangars, if you will. Uh, we just see some grade issues that need to be corrected there with the taxiway and some earthwork for the new hangar, uh, footprint. Um, and I'll, I stand for any questions. Um, I don't have a cost. I apologize for that. Uh, as for the taxiway, uh, work, uh, the village did indicate in a, in a meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago that they, they could, uh, actually accomplish that work possibly. Um, not sure if that's how it should go or not, or at least we can. Um, not sure if that's how it should go or not, or at least we can, we can put the, uh, taxiway work into the project as a bid lot or the bid project and see what the cost is at that time. Um, I hesitate that that taxiway work, uh, I think it needs to happen with the construction of the hangars just because of the way the grades work. Um, but, uh, we can build the hangars now and the taxiway can be done later if that's, if that's what's agreed upon. So, um, I know that's a mouthful, uh, uh, we will work up some costs on the, on the asphalt work and the grading, get those up to you, but, um, conceptually, uh, it works fine. It just, there, there is just a little bit more, uh, site work that'll have to, have to occur.
Uh, Mr. Gilmer, did you have any?
Yes, uh, commissioners and manager Trujillo, uh, the village, uh, mayor, the village council, we, we've discussed this thoroughly, this, the project's been, you know, in planning stage now going over two years. Uh, we really have come to the place, uh, that we need to get it off the board and get going because we only have, well, just on a year to get this completed before the grant runs out. Uh, the reason why that this slight change is for the future development of, uh, hangars uh, down through the airport property. So in part of our mission to move this airport over to Angel Fire, we're having to do a new master plan. Uh, and the master plan, after great review and discussion, would show that, that this alignment would be best served, uh, for future use. Mr. Provine was absolutely correct. We would also preserve, uh, some land that is closer to the existing hangar to circle back to the original. Uh, intent of this grant was to build a single large hangar, which was voted on by this commission two years ago. Um, so we, as the village, and I think for the whole community, us, another large hangar in that space is, uh, is vital, uh, uh, i- in the long term. Um, so the village again does know and understand that there's our, we're probably already in cost overrun with this and we're going to be picking up the tab, you know, a- as we move along. That'll be discussion that we'll have as costs start coming in. Uh, I think the biggest thing is this point is just to get this off the, the table into an RFP and start talking to some folks to get this, uh, done. This grant also includes, uh, repair of the door, replacement of the doors on the existing hangar. So those two combined things inside of a year is going to be pretty tight. So, uh, uh, that is the reason why the village is looking to make that move is simply to, uh, look at a longer time period of what would serve the airport best in the flying community.
Better. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Provine, where are we at cost in your estimate?
Uh, I, our last look at the cost estimate, uh, commissioners, uh, we were a little bit over budget. Uh, that door replacement is upwards of four hundred thousand dollars. That's for the door plus the structural work. Um, the hangars, we were holding, um, I believe at about one, one point one million. So we're at one and a half million or so. Uh, the grant is one point two million. Uh, we've, uh, I, I might add, and I, I failed to mention this previously and I apologize, but, uh, this will, uh, save some asphalt work, but then with, for, we're working on the taxiway, uh, any, by rotating the hangars to the doors to the east, that would, that would save some asphalt apron, if you will, at the previous location. However, if, if we're having to regrade the taxiway, I don't know that that savings is, is real. Um, so we're, we're, uh, we're nervous, uh, about the cost. I'll, I'll tell you that. I will get a, a new number wrapped up here in the next few days and, and get that forwarded out to everybody. Uh, we were working on the final structural numbers for the door and, uh, uh, checking on some costs for the hangar itself. I was kind of holding off to see what the commission's views were on this, this change before I, uh, updated the civil, the earthwork numbers and, and the paving, if you will. But we can wrap that up now. Uh, I, I think we're probably a little over budget, to be quite frank.
Commissioner Trujillo? I have no problem, uh, approving this as long as the, the village is, is willing to accept any, uh, over, over, over costs on the, the earth movement, et cetera. Um, I guess the ultimate goal, uh, and I hate saying this, I know it's a, a rough door, but I guess the ultimate goal would be to get that new, new hangar, right, first, instead of, uh, it'd be nice to get the doors and the hangar.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just thinking out loud because I know, I want to get something done. I don't want to not be able to get both done. You know what I mean? Or, uh, that's my thought on that, but my other question is, Mike, do you think you could get the, uh, RFP for the new hangar to us by our next meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, let me, let me back up a second. Um, we, we need to really look at that door because that door is a safety issue. It has come off the track several times. It is very difficult to open without, um, putting a tug on it or a piece of equipment to push it open. Uh, so God forbid that that door comes off and, and, and lands on an airplane or worse on, on somebody. So, um, I, I think safety is a priority on that one. Um, yes, to answer your question, I think we'll button this up. Um, I'll try to get, uh, plans and specs out to everybody, uh, next week. Uh, I know your deadline for getting on the commission agenda is next Wednesday, I believe. Uh, but we'll shoot towards that. We do have some specifications to, to wrap up, uh, but we'll, we'll head that way. If, if that is not possible, I will let you, everybody know and possibly have a, a, ask for a special meeting. I hate to do that. So I know you all are very busy, but, but we, Mr. Gilmer said, we need, we need to get this out on the street. We need to, we need to publish this. For beds, so we can get this in.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir. I agree. We need to get this on the road and completed.
Thank you.
Any further, Commissioner Trujillo?
No, thank you for informing me about the door, Mike. But, uh, Mr. Gilmer, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that I, I, I'll affirm what Mike said. The door is, uh, does need to be replaced. It's, it's not as critical as having to use a tug to open and close it. We can still do it by hand, but it has come off. This door is, I don't know how tall, probably close to twenty feet tall and twelve feet wide, and it's very heavy if it did come off. Luckily, we have the wind to our advantage that blows, doesn't blow on it, you know, to create more of a hazard. But I will affirm that with Mike, that's, it, it is a mission critical function to get that door replaced. Um, so, uh, you know, if you wanted further discussion on how we split this, I could understand that. But I think what we have right now is a good working plan if we can get it off the table. And, and, and I will tell you also, yes, and, and I'll reaffirm again, the discussion with the, with the mayor, with the, the village manager, with council members and the advisory committee. We do understand we're already in cost overrun on this project and that the village will have to step up to, uh, make up the difference. We also do have the road grading and ability to do the grading work for that taxiway. And, uh, that's been discussed with roads also.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, um, you know, State Aviation's been a, a really good partner on these projects. And I'm, I'm not sure what their budget looks like, but, um, it never hurts to ask to see if there's some more money available because I, I think these are, these are important projects. And, uh, we need to get them done. Uh, you know, I hate to put priority on the hangar versus the door. To me, they're pretty equal. Although the safety issue, uh, comes, comes to, floats up to the top, if you will. Uh, we're also included that we're planning to include in this bed is the containment structure for the field farm, which is a, uh, uh, state regulation issue. We do have a separate grant for that, um, so, uh, under the state. But we're trying to include all that work in one project to make it more attractive to somebody to come in, uh, to do all that work. So anyways, that, that's also in the plan.
Thank you, Mike. I'll, uh, I'll draft up a letter, send it to you and Jeff to look over it. I, I don't mind asking, so I'll ask State Aviation, so.
Um, and just another note, um, uh, there, there is a new State Aviation Director coming in, uh, to, uh, to the office. I'm not sure her, of her start date. I don't know that it's public knowledge, but they will have a new director. Uh, but I can, uh, see if that name's public and I can forward that to you for that letter.
Yeah, if you would.
All right. Yes, sir.
Anything further?
No, I have nothing further, but Mike, would you still stay on to my docket? I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the hangar placement to what the Ang- the Village of Angel Fire was looking to.
Second. Well.
Yes.
Managers docket.
Alrighty. Um, there's been some discussion and I, I did kind of want to seek them. I got in some of the commission and Mr. Provine too, on the event center. Um, I put it in our packet as far as what the, the calendars of events were. Uh, I've already told our county manager's office that we are no longer going to use the, the, the building, but the rodeo arena could still be used. It's been brought into question if we want to still use the arena or not, uh, due to liability reasons. I know that the rodeo was trying. I've also heard that the motocross was going to try to also use the arena as well. Um, as far as construction goes, I feel like, I feel like we could talk to Archuleta, have them, sort of, you know, section that off over there on the right-hand side and we could still use the arena. Um, I understand that there's going to be a short timeframe when a water line is going to be put in. But, Mr. Provine, I wanted to get your, your comment on that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, I'm, I'm not sure the dates on, on the motocross and the rodeo, but, uh, those are weekend events, if you will. I know they, they take prep and all that, so they'll, but they're, um, my only concern is, and I, I'll get with Vince Payne, but we'll certainly need to get with a contractor compare schedules to see how that lines up with, with the work, if you will. Uh, that, that entrance, the pedestrian entrance into the rodeo grounds is right between, uh, rodeo grounds fence, if you will, and, and the building. It's, uh, I'm thinking thirty, forty feet. We just need to make sure that we have, uh, uh, that barricaded off from the construction. You mentioned the water line. We need to make sure that if there is a trench there, um, we probably need to have no trenches open during that time, those, if those two events. Uh, but I, I absolutely fence that off, uh, and restrict, you know, separate the construction from the public. Uh, we need to make sure we have a proper width on that too, is my point. So we can check into that. Do you, do you have the dates on the, on the rodeo and the motocross by chance?
I'll have to get with you on those.
That's fine. But I, I, I think we're trying to set up that pre-con, but, uh, let's, uh, let's have those, uh, uh, discussions if, if we may reach out to Archuleta and start talking that. Uh, I, I think those are two big events for your community. We want to preserve that, I think. Those are, those are, those are pretty good sized events that, that I think the community benefits from. So I, I think we can accomplish that, uh, separate the construction off, uh, hopefully, and, and have both, if you will.
Yeah. Um, you can be here for the pre-construction meeting?
Uh.
Think it's Monday, next Monday?
Um.
I'm not sure. Anyways, you know.
I, I don't know that, um, to be quite frank, um.
We could touch base later, Mike.
Yeah, let's touch base later and, um, uh, certainly, I, I, I think, uh, if not, I'm, I'm sure, certain Vince Payne is obviously going to be able to handle that, but let me, uh, let me get on stairs and talk to Vince. But yeah, let's talk later.
That works. Thank you. Then, uh, thank you. I did want to inform the commission, we did have some complaints, uh, on a county roads T ten. Um, this is from the new owners of the UU bar. Guess there's a, the Summit Miami Cemetery Foundation has been trying to get back into that cemetery, uh, that gate has been locked. I have confirmed with Glenn that our, the county road maintenance and county road does end there at that cattle guard where the gate is. Um, so I'm not, I'm going to ask Daniel for his assistance in this later. Uh, assistance and maybe guidance, uh, on reaching back out to the Miami, uh, Cemetery Foundation. Uh, like I mentioned before, I'll work on the FRA letter with Audrey. Um, I'll be going to, um, what, Santa Fe this Thursday for a, uh, North Central meeting. I met last week with Blue Earth Renewable. They're the ones that are working on a solar wind farm going on the east side. It's in my district over there for, uh, most of it's going to be in Union, small part of it's going to be in Colfax County. Uh, they just gave us an update on kind of where they're at, how they see things progressing. Their biggest issue right now is getting, uh, transmission lines, uh, getting access to transmission lines. But it's going to be enough wind generation to power two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand homes. Um, we held the department workshop budget, uh, meeting, had a lot of good input, feedback there. Uh, like I said, uh, Justin and Audrey are, they're working on that with Leroy. Uh, next is the fire, the fire, uh, chiefs meeting. I did want to make sure that all fire chiefs, uh, I'll ask the fire marshal again to reiterate this. And Mr. Tatum, maybe you're welcome to do the same. Um, to, if you have not, and got, if you have, if you're a fire chief and you have issues with your budget currently, please report this to, uh, Leroy Sandoval. Let him know your issues so we could get everything amended and adjusted. This way we could move forward in that workshop. Everything could be correct and we can move forward there. Um, the jail, the, uh, we're still waiting on a nurse. We haven't been able to find one. Just wanted to give you an update on that.
I thought they had one.
No, they ended up, uh, declining. We have one applicant that's asked if it, the position is still open. Um, I think we're waiting to see if they submit a, a thing, but I know that has to do with accreditation, so I just wanted to keep the board informed of that. Um, we did have an attempted break-in in the YES program storage shed. Uh, the sheriff's department went and, uh, took reports. It was all caught on camera, so we should be able to wrap all that up. Um, the YES program and the health council will be having their annual, uh, health, healthcare this Thursday at the convention center, so I encourage all to go if they can. And that's going to be from nine o'clock to three o'clock. I think they have reduced fee screenings, et cetera, there. Uh, I did want to talk with the commission, see about dates for a possible budget workshop. Um, probably in May sometime. So if you just look at your calendars, let me know what dates kind of work with you. I'll throw them to JAG and, uh, see if we could come up with a few dates. And then, uh, to hold our public hearings, I also, at the same point too, we have probably a good close to a dozen applicants on the, the manager's side of things. I'm still fine with, with keeping it open, but I would like to start the process of the commission reviewing these and having an interview and, and pushing it along. If you could, uh, also provide me, even if that's the same date, it could be a, uh, budget workshop followed by a closed session to interview, interview, uh, county personnel or for the manager's position, or however it needs to be. So just look at your dates, if you would, please. Um, I think that is, uh, that is all that comes to mind right now. Is there any questions for the commission?
Uh, just, uh, on the, uh, go on the work on the rodeo grounds. Uh, surely they could schedule where they could dig and sit. Or, and then if needed, temporary fencing or something, just because that kind of equipment kids love to play.
Yeah, and I don't think, yeah, but, uh, I think it's manageable to get those two,
I do too.
Two completed in that, when you're putting in a water line, you don't want to keep it open long anyway, so. two completed in that when you're putting in a water line, you don't want to keep it open long anyway, so maybe it's a day or two.
Sounds good. Surely they can time that out. That's all I have. Right, uh Commissioner Doc, oh, I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes.
Miami Cemetery Foundation, so the road they're wanting improved on C ten is not county road?
So they're not looking for improvement. They're just looking for access to the cemetery. So the road, it's a county road, so it's one of those where it just goes maybe a quarter mile in.
Yeah.
There's a fence and then it's another half mile to the cemetery.
Uh huh.
And then that's private land.
Okay.
They're just trying to get access to that cemetery.
So they don't want to drive down a feed road or whatever.
Well, the 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 gate's locked now. It used to be that the gate was open to go to the cemetery.
Okay.
Now it's locked with the new ownership.
Of the UU Bar?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a county matter, but I understand how the county.
Yeah.
And that's what I was going to talk to to the county attorney about.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, if it's been used for a public access for four and ten years to a
And it has been.
cemetery, then yeah, there's I've learned those laws rather well due to sportsmen, hunters and for any events on where out there.
I think the cemetery is fine with it being closed to share the combo. So if there's, they want to get back there to see family and whatnot.
Okay, yep, sounds good to me. That's it, sir. Uh, Commissioner's docket and Mrs. Kern did not join us. I really have nothing for this docket other than it's going to be very busy. Uh I have nothing pressing to bring up, so I move for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mission.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, we are adjourned.